Turn your cell phones off of you. Please join me in a quick lead. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone for being here this evening and we'll start off with our agenda. Patty, would you please take role?
Dan.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Ryan. John.
Here. At this time, I'd ask for any conflict of interest from any of the commissioners?
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none. And ask for an approval of the agenda.
I presume to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to approve the agenda for this evening. Can I have any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now's the time for public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individuals, or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. Are there any public comments? Seeing hearing none, I'll close public comment. We have our next item on the agenda is our Sheriff Preston to declare items as surplus.
Commissioner, thank you. So you guys have a list of some items? Where were you at on that?
I have...
Wanda, turn your mic. Wanda, your microphone. The microphone. Yay! Finally! I've got one!
I had that one on, and it's usually Mr. Clemish who walks by and turns it off before the meeting. But he's right, this one was off.
It was all set up because he's part of his joke.
April fools, Wanda. April fools. That was our joke.
That was yesterday.
April fools is past. You're the biggest fool at last.
So you guys got a list of items. So as you know, I've been talking to you guys a little bit. We're trying to do a cleanup at the safety center. Since I took office, there's a lot of stuff downstairs in the basement that just needs to be getting rid of. I've been working with the YPD, the Yankton Police Department, and also the city of Yankton to do kind of a spring cleanup event since right now is a good time to get rid of stuff. So the city agreed to let us do some cleaning up in the basements. So one of the... And I'm actually stepping in for Jeff as well. There was some items that he wanted to be destroyed as well. So tonight's agenda for this, I think the last page that you guys have, it's got Motorola radios, EF Johnson. You can disregard that whole sheet. I talked to Paul Scherschlik, he had a hold of me. He might be able to use some of these radios for something else. So we're going to hold off on that. But the other two pages, like I said, I'm stepping in for Jeff on some of these items because I was going to be here anyways. So my page, which is the, I think, page two, it's got like the TV slash VCR in a bag. I don't know how many people have VCRs. I'm not trying to...
They're coming back.
Yeah. Pink tiles.
I see a Gateway computer. They haven't made those in a long time.
Yeah, we reached out to Sioux City. They're not there anymore. So the list of items that we have, this is just to be destroyed. There's no value in it. A lot of them are old desktop computers, which has got important information on it from the sheriff's office over the years. I talked to John Anderson with IT, and we're going to work with a guy named Craig Dean. He's out of Sioux City. He comes up for the Yankton School District, and he cleans up all their old computers. He takes them apart, and then he destroys them at no cost.
I think this makes sense. I'd move that we surplus list one and list two, but not list three.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to approve list number one and number two of the surplus items. Any further discussion?
Rob and Patty, do we say surplus and destroy, or just surplus?
Just surplus.
Okay.
And like I said, I've already worked it out with the city of Yankton, and then this Craig Dean will come in and take up the electronics. He does not take TVs though, so that will go to the city.
He's going to take the Gateway, though.
Yeah, he'll take the Gateway. Antique roadshow hits Yankton, we're all... We're at a loss, but...
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Preston.
Thank you.
Well, since our Connect South Dakota program, all of they, I'm sure are here, so let's move on to that next item. Ryan Thompson?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Like you know it, my name is Ryan Thompson, and joining me tonight is Mark Wilson and Randy Northrup as well. And of course, I can't talk a little bit about tech without having a little bit of tech, so I do have a few slides. If they're the right ones, they should be the same ones that were included in your packet, hitting some of the highlights in this, and hopefully everybody else can see it as well. So the Connect South Dakota broadband program was developed by the South Dakota Legislature several years ago, and it was funded, I think it was seed-funded, if I remember right, with starting with $25 million. And it's administered by the Governor's Office Economic Development. And so from an economic development standpoint, the state has felt, and the governor, have felt very strongly about making sure that there are no areas of rural South Dakota especially that does not have sufficient internet access for today, tomorrow, and the future. So this program is put together to make sure that that happens. And some of the areas that we've been monitoring, and that we've done even near some of our main service area, have been funded by these grants to improve the connectivity. So there's a URL link up there if you're ever interested in reading up more on it. But again, the whole purpose of it is to provide fast and reliable broadband. And it is specifically targeted for rural areas where that does not exist, or at least per the state's standards. The second item is the project area and scope. And I'm going to flip ahead to this next slide. And for us, the project is twofold. We have a portion here in Yankton County that is just shy of 100 square miles, and we have another corresponding, slightly larger area. I think it's about 150 square miles over in Clay County. But again, for us, the project is all under one scope. And so we are now currently in the process of doing the field staking, the design aspect of it, kind of understand where everybody lives, what residents, businesses, so on and so forth are out there. And then our engineers will put together a solution that works for today's connectivity needs and for years down the road. At some point fairly soon here, we'll start to work with Yankton County's Highway Department, where they have, like most counties, have a process that they use so that telecommunications providers such as ourselves have access to the public right of ways. And generally, most of the designs work with that in the county, as well as the townships that are affected. So the engineers take care of all that process, and then usually we're available at any time if there's any questions or follow-up. But that's a pretty general permitting and common permitting process. And as far as the potentially affected or benefited customers, our estimates show that there are right around 375 or so eligible locations in the Yankton County area. And when I say eligible, again, the state looks at the area by their criteria, and then they say, submit a plan for this. So providers like us, and I'll talk about our organization in a second, put together a competitive proposal process. And in our case, we won. Won the grant opportunity. So then we provide the estimates, we provide what we think it'll cost, and they basically say, okay, here's a portion of the grant, but you can't spend any more than that, or the costs around the company, or any differences. So, yes.
Question. I maybe missed it, but the area in white below the brown?
Oh, yes.
What's the difference between the brown and the white?
Yeah, no, good question. So the white area on the entire map is where the grant funds are not eligible to be used. And in this particular community's instance, that is Century Link and Midco that serve that area, at least to the state's understanding. I say that a little tongue-in-cheek because sometimes it's not quite right. But yeah, by and large, south of Highway 50 is Midcontinent and Century Link, the wireline telecommunications providers. And so the main thing is the state just wants to make sure that nobody's using state funds in an area that's already deemed acceptable.
So the goal is just to have a provider in the area, and the current areas don't have somebody who's going there? Is that...
Correct. In the brown area today, your incumbent provider for many years has been Century Link in this area, and they, per the state, have just not done enough to maintain investment. So everybody else, including Century Link, had a chance to use these grant funds if they so choose, but we won the grant fund. So, yeah, so anyways, we're filling in the blanks there. But it's the state's intent to, again, make sure between the city and any areas in the rural, that any areas that are still un- or underserved, that those be addressed with this grant. And of course, that's our intent as well. And then just a little bit about Santel. So our organization is a telephone cooperative founded in 1952. Our board of directors, we have seven people from the community that are voted in by our patrons, that make up our board and our vision body, and our governance body as well. And in this particular illustration, this is from the South Dakota Telecommunications Association, or SDTA, and this shows all the different providers, small company providers like ourselves across the state. And the areas that you see that are white is where there are no existing company operations from our membership. That doesn't mean there's not a provider there necessarily, but the point is, is that we're part of kind of a larger family of companies that we work together to solve these types of problems. And so there are cooperatives, tribal telecommunications companies, family-owned, and even a couple municipals such as Beersford and Brookings City. So anyways, that kind of makes up our family. And then when you focus in on kind of, you know, this area in this very southeast portion of the state, the first thing I'll admit is, our mapping people kind of got Yankton out of whack there. They need to move it down by the river. And so anyways, the dots a little off there. But that orange area that you see, that's where Yankton is currently noted, that's the last grant that was awarded to Golden West. So that was from last year. And then now, as we move forward, we'll start to fill in this white area, and then some other providers up through the north, you know, up by Irene, down by southeast of Vermillion. Other providers were awarded other grants down in that area. So that area, again, the state's intent is to take it from white and make it colored by some provider, indicating that it is now going to be covered.
Will there be any areas in Yankton County that aren't going to be served even after this grant, that you're aware of, maybe you're not aware of?
Yeah, not to our knowledge. And so when we were going through this with the state, I think it was more on them to look at that specifically. And Mike Walner out there at the broadband office tells me that this should take care of it.
And who did you say the provider up in the north part by Irene and north of that is?
Irene, so today, that's going to be Blue Peak.
Blue Peak.
Yep, that's kind of their legacy area. I can...
You're getting internet then, out there, so...
Yeah, well, it depends. Because Blue Peak, you know, certainly they have their own investment and development initiatives, and I can't remember the name, but there was another company that was awarded to overbuild a Blue Peak area because they weren't, the state felt they weren't investing aggressively enough.
And it's so important that we have people that'll go into these rural areas, and I can see why the state funding is important, because if you just ask a company to do it, it's probably not going to pay for itself with the limited number of subscriptions. So I think this is a good program that you guys are doing.
No, that's exactly right. It's a common question when we've talked to public leadership groups, you know, why didn't you do this before type thing? And the economics just don't allow for it. And with the state's assistance, we have a narrow window of opportunity to use this, get it done, get it in place. And of course, you'll hear more from us as time goes on throughout the community, where now we need to educate the community to understand this is an opportunity. Don't pass up on this. And of course, we're biased because internet is connecting a lot of stuff. And lastly, I'd just show you a screen print. I'm not so sure this one made your packet. But anyways, it shows where our historical territory is at. We come down as far south as tripped, so it wasn't a big deal for us to prepare some of our technicians to do work down here and support these customers for, you know, for years and years to come. So we're in your neck of the woods. We're not that far away. Our headquarters is in one socket. Yeah, yeah. And so anyways, I guess that is what I wanted to share from an informational standpoint, and answer any questions you may have.
I think it's great that you're coming into the area to help service everyone that has not got service. So appreciate you coming down and sharing this information with us, and also to work in our area.
All right.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I'd have to say is, you're going to be working with our Highway Department to make sure, you know, the roads are found like you left them, and it sounds like you guys are willing to do that, and we're happy to have you in the community. So, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is IT. There was going to be a discussion with the commission, and Commissioner Heine did not make it back in time to present, so we're going to table, postpone that until...
Is he going to come later, or do you think he's...
I don't think so.
He just didn't, he sent an email saying he wouldn't.
So we'll postpone that to next meeting, which will be on June or April.
Maybe we could discuss it a little bit at strategic planning, too.
Sure.
Might be a good idea, so...
And next, Gary is up for approved planning commission appointments.
We have two planning commission openings, Dennis, Michael, and Kathy Weiss. Terms were ended this month, and we have six applicants, Kathy Weiss, Sam Hummel, Sherry Hoffman, Zane Williams, Jamison Rounds, and Michael Welch. Vote on two for that.
Do you want them just to write on a piece of...
I got some sheets here.
Some... Thanks, Gary.
Are there two Michael Welches?
Yes.
There are two.
This is the one that was...
Identify what one this one is.
...the one I first started, and yeah, this is...
Is this the one who did the executive summary and was on the wind task?
This is the older, skinny one.
Want us to circle them, or how do you want us to?
Circle, whatever you want.
Amazingly good list of high-quality candidates. Thank people for stepping up.
Five, six to choose from. Every one of them would be a great candidate.
You got it?
Can I have one of those extra ones?
Do you know if Ryan's available by phone, too?
He didn't say. Either way.
Drum roll. Hmm? Drum roll.
Drum roll.
Did you get Dan's?
I've got four.
Okay.
You'd almost think you've counted votes before.
See how long it takes to hand-count votes.
And there's only four.
Yeah. We have Sam Hummel with three votes, Jamison Rounds with two votes, and Michael Welch with three votes.
So Sam and Michael. All right, thanks a lot.
I'd move we go into Board of Adjustment.
I have a motion.
You have to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. We've got 10 minutes.
Then I'd move that we approve the March 2024 payroll.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to approve March 2024 payroll. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
We seconded that down.
Don did, yep. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Gary, you need a motion for the appointment.
Make a motion to approve the planning commission members.
Who are?
Who are they? Sam?
Mike Welch and Sam Hummel.
Second.
I have a...
Dan, you first.
She made the mo... Well...
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to approve the appointments of the planning commission. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I'd move that we approve the claims.
I have a motion to approve the claims. Can I get a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Dan. Further discussion? All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the March 19, 2024 minutes?
I'll move.
Motion by Don, second by Dan, to approve the March 19, 2024 minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I guess we're going to wait another five minutes.
Do you have anything for Commissioner?
Could do Commissioner.
Commissioner updates? Anything for Commissioner updates?
I have nothing.
We're going to have a strategic planning session. Is it Friday?
Friday.
What time was that?
Two.
Two o'clock. And the agenda's been posted. You guys are all welcome. Public welcome to attend that. I don't really think I have a whole lot. I did see that there is several summer studies announced by the legislature, one of them being something to do with property tax. I haven't heard any details if that's going to be more of like Director of Equalization and the process that it's done, or ways to look at trying to get valuations under control, which I both know has been mentioned numerous times. But I have not heard any specifics about that. I don't know if any of you guys have either. But that'll be something interesting to watch. And I believe another one was going to be artificial intelligence and how our state is going to deal with that, and how county governments are, you know, our local governments are going to have to deal with that as well. Pretty interesting.
I would like, since we've got a couple minutes, I'd like Rob. Rob, there he is. Rob, do a, take a look at what our position is in Yankton County for squatters.
Do we have some squatters?
We will have. We will have.
You're always so full of light and sunshine, Don. Migrants, squatters.
I'm looking after these people here, not those people.
It's unfortunate. The reality is that what we're going to, you know, Don's right, is we're going to have to deal with that at some point. And how do we do that? And then I know the sheriff left, but I believe it's his, when something like that happens, they have to do the eviction process. So it can be very dangerous, so...
Well, it can take long enough time for him to ruin the property while you're waiting to get the eviction.
You're exactly right, so...
If ever.
You're going to cramp?
Hey, Dan, I can look at it and present next week. I can tell you how the eviction process works. You have a three-day notice to quit, and if they don't leave within the three days, then you sue them to take over the property, and that's a four-day window. Instead of a 30-day window, they have a four-day window to respond. And if they don't respond, then there's like a four or five-day window, then you can have a trial, or they give, they move relatively quick. The state of South Dakota has good law on evictions, so it's a quick process.
Well, I'd like to have a...
And the court's usually pretty good about ordering the sheriff and allowing the sheriff in there to get him removed. So if they don't respond, Judge Sorenson specifically watches. So when you make a motion for default and say they didn't respond within the four-day window, then she'll sign an order pretty quick. So procedurally, the state's pretty good.
That doesn't keep them from coming back, though.
But otherwise, it's trespass, because they do a notice of trespass. If they come back, we're to arrest them, so whether that happens. But that's what we're supposed to do.
I'm guessing there's enough redneck people in Yankton County that may not want to even take that two-week or three-week period to get back in their property.
Probably. Could be.
We have enough people who have vacation homes here that it could be a huge issue that, you know, they're gone all winter and then, you know...
Now you're giving them ideas.
No, well, I'm just...
Thank you, Commissioner Clemish.
It's 6:30.
Believe me, believe me, they all get knowledge about how they go out and do these things. We don't have to tell them. You don't have to believe them.
Can we go into Board of Adjustment now?
Second. Do you have any Commissioner? Do you have any Commissioner updates?
No.
Okay.
So with Wanda and Dan?
I'll second.
We got a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to go into Board of Adjustment.
Our applicants requesting a conditional use permit to build a single-family dwelling on rural transitional district per Article 18, Section 1805, and Article 19, Section 1905. Said property is legally described as east nine hundred and fifty-three feet of the east half of the southwest corridor, lying south of the highway, Section 4, Township 93, Range 56, Yankton County, South Dakota, less highways and roads. E-911 address is 4409, South Dakota Highway 314. And applicant applicants here to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any?
Graham, did you want to come up and just tell us what your, what your project is?
It's really a project. It's a family farm that's been our homestead for over a hundred years, and the old farmhouse fell apart. And so I'm just putting a new house up, so.
Yeah, in most districts, a single-family resident would just be a permitted use, but rural transitional has a lot of restrictions on, on it. And that's why you gotta do the conditional use process.
Well, I was reading in there somewhere that it's like if you own the property or you homesteaded on the property, you should have been exempt from having to do that, because it was agricultural always for many years. And then it got rezoned by the county. And so I was supposed to be able to apply under the old zoning.
Is that, yeah.
Yeah, the problem is, is, yeah, it's been rural transitional.
Yeah, for twenty years, right? Yeah. I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the commission?
No.
At this time, we have public comment? Hearing seeing none? Any further discussion by the commission?
There were no conditions placed on it by the Planning Commission.
Go through the findings of fact.
Findings of fact, single-family residents, notice of public hearing was given. Planning Commission recommended to grant the conditional use. There's ingress egress, off right-of-way parking, refuse and service area present, utilities with references. Location were present, no screening or buffing required, no signs required. And yard setback and spaces required, yards met and found to be in general compatibility with the adjacent district. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Don. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Congratulations, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to go out of Board of Adjustment and back into regular session.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to go back into regular session. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We are now in regular session and... This time we do a public comment? Our last, one, one last public comment? Hearing seeing none? Public comment is closed. I would now ask for a motion to move into executive session.
I'd move to go into executive session for poor relief issues as well as personnel issues.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Don. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
When he calls me Don, I feel like I'm getting a break.
Well, there's so much similarity between Dan and Don.
Well, hey, just start using our initials.